Cathedral of Faith Baptist Church. Everyone, please silence your phones. If you so choose, please stand and remain standing for our pledge to our nation's flag. Thank you.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father, we thank you for this day and this time that you, through your grace, has allowed us to share. We thank you for this gathering and for everyone who is involved. We thank you for the mayor, the city council, and for this great community. As we gather in this place today, let us gather in unity, peace, hope, and trust in you, Father, because we ask you for your wisdom and guidance in every decision that is made. Bless the leadership body to lead with ethics, fairness, and accountability. Let every decision matter and be saturated with thoughtfulness. Father, bless this city, bless our school district, bless the daily workings of our community. Guide our steps that we foster goodwill in all people. Let your character reign within us in so much that we become a beacon of light for this area, for this country, and throughout the world. Knowing that you are all sufficient, we trust in you to give us wisdom, knowledge, and understanding to move forward victoriously. We thank you for every blessing, and we glorify your name. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Amen. Our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Reverend Simeon. Reverend Simeon is one of my old neighborhood high school friends. Thank you. May I have the roll call, please?
Mayor Muton.
Present.
Mayor Protem Samuel.
Present.
Councilmember Doria.
I'm here.
Councilmember Getz.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Here.
Councilmember Felschah.
Present.
And Councilmember Neal.
Present.
Thank you. At the close of the city council meeting, the council will hold an executive session to consider matters related to contemplating our pending litigation in accordance with Section 551.071 of the government code, "Claim of Jessica Watts, Claim of Charlotte Levine." Considering matters to deliberate the employment evaluation duties of a public officer or employee in accordance with Section 551.074 of the government code to wit specifically, Sherei Reed, First Assistant City Attorney, to discuss and/or deliberate economic development negotiations in accordance with Section 551.087 of the government code to wit specifically, a proposed letter of intent, LOL with OCI, Beaumont LLC. Thank you. We have no proclamations, no recognitions tonight. Now is the time for any citizen who wishes to speak. If you would like to make a public comment on the consent agenda, items three through five and seven, please complete the green slip at the back of the room. Fill it out, give it to the clerk at the front of the room. She will call your name when it's time for you to speak. The green light will come on. You will have three minutes to speak, and at the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on.
I don't have any at this time, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion for the approval of the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
Item number D, Mr. Manager, it says miscellaneous improvements allowance of $100,000. I had a citizen that read it and asked me for clarification exactly what it was. I know me and you talked about it early, but I'd rather answer it on record for the citizen because see, I asked about it.
Mayor Council is basically a contingency line item in the contract, and anything over $10,000 as it relates to a change order, anything over 10% by the charter has to come back to the council. However, it's a contingency, and we place that in a number of our contracts. Not all of them, but in a lot of them.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the consent agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, for sake of time and for the sake of the citizens and our employees, we are going to move to item number seven, which is part of the executive session so that you sitting here in the audience and the employees here do not have to wait for us to do the entire consent agenda. We will recess to executive session to take care of item number seven and then come back down.
Mayor, I don't think the company's representatives are here yet, are all of them. So they want to be able to speak to you in executive session.
Did you intend for them to attend the executive session?
Yes, I thought they were here. I don't know who all the parties are. So they're not here.
There may be some here. Is there anyone here from OCI? Okay.
Okay. For sake of time, we were just trying not to... So with that being said, we are going to go ahead and I'll ask for the reading of the first item, please.
Okay. Mayor Council, item number one. Is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance granting a specific use permit to allow a gasoline retailer convenience store in an NC neighborhood commercial district for property located at 3355 Gladys Avenue in the city of Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. The applicant is requesting a specific use permit, again, to allow a gasoline convenience store. The applicant plans to demolish the existing buildings and construct a new facility. At a joint public hearing held on November the 15th, 2021, the planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the specific use permit with five conditions that are listed in the staff memorandum. The administration recommends approval with the same conditions.
You've heard the reading of item number one. May I have a motion, please?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilmember Neal.
Thank you, Mayor. This is right in front of a residential neighborhood. I would like to see if it would be unreasonable for us to request that a fence go up on the west side of this property, just to help block some of the view from that residential neighborhood there.
A condition can be added.
Okay, there's a request for an additional condition.
Mayor, I support that as well.
So we have an additional condition with the second. Any discussion?
Can I ask one thing?
Sure.
Mr. Boone, what are your thoughts on that?
I think it's fine. The only, of course, the only exception would be where the driveways are and set back enough so there's not a line of sight issue with the fence. And so we would run that through traffic engineering. So I would just say, subject to approval by traffic engineer.
Thank you.
Mayor, would that be a long fellow?
No, sir. It would be... Yeah, it is a long fellow.
Is that where the landscaping will be also?
My understanding is the landscaping is supposed to go on all or on three sides, not the side that butts up to the other building.
So the proposal currently is for perimeter landscaping on the east, north, and west side. But again, the fence could, the fence is not going to be very wide, so it could be at the back edge of that perimeter landscaping.
Mr. Boone, the adjustments can be made to the landscaping once the approval of the driveway is moved, correct?
Yes. So in other words, if the condition is, currently, it's required to have landscaping. If the condition is, in addition to that, a condition whereby a privacy fence is required on the west side, subject to the approval of traffic engineer, it could all be adjusted to some degree to accommodate that, yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Boone, do you know if a game room would be at this newly built gas station?
No, sir. No game room is proposed.
Okay.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving the motion with the conditions? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. At this time, I do see that someone is here from OCI. Correct? Yes. Yes, Mayor.
I'm actually here with Griffith Mosley Johnson, and they, we actually represent OCI. There are representatives from OCI that will be here to answer your questions in your executive session. They're on their way here from Houston. They're from out of town. One's actually from the United Kingdom.
Okay. So could you please signify me and... Because what we're trying to do, Mayor, we're trying to move ahead to that item for executive session so that the audience and the employees won't have to wait for the other executive items.
Okay. Well, we can do that. I can text them and say, come on when you're ready. I just told them that it was not till the end of the meeting.
Okay. We're going to move it just for sake of time so that we can meet on the other executive items.
But not till the executive session time, right? You're not going to move it up now, right? Just so I...
We will move it up.
Okay.
So as soon as they get here, if you'll just let us know.
I will do that.
Thank you. And this is something that we just decided once we got up here on the podium because we know that the other executive items are going to take...
Longer.
Longer.
Okay. I will let them know that. They were driving in from Houston, and I believe they were almost here about 20 minutes ago.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so very much. May I have the reading of item number two, please?
Mayor and Council, item number two is an ordinance entitled, an ordinance honorarily changing the name of Buford Street between Port and Brooklyn Streets to McCarty Street, Beaumont, Jefferson County, Texas. Reverend Willie F. Williams, Jr. has requested to rename a portion of Buford Street to McCarty Street. Reverend Williams states that the street should be renamed in honor of the work Reverend William Nelson McCarty, Sr., accomplished in the community. There are two properties in the subject area using Buford, the Buford Street, addresses. At a joint public hearing held on November the 15th, planning commission recommended eight to zero to approve the request. Administration recommends approval as well.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number two. May I have a motion, please?
I shall move for approval. Second.
Have a motion and a second. Do we have any discussion? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number three, please?
Item number three is to consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Jefferson County related to the housing of prisoners at the county jail. The proposed contract would continue through October the 31st of 2022. Thereafter, the contract would continue from year to year unless terminated by either party. This matter has been discussed in executive session a number of times. The administration recommends approval.
You've heard the reading of item number three. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve. For a second, then.
Councilmember Getz, let's go to a second. Councilmember Felschah, first. Any discussion? Councilmember Samuel.
Yes, I'd just like to thank Judge Brannick as well as Sheriff Stevens for working very diligently toward making this happen. I believe it will be good for both the county and the city with this continued relationship. So I just wanted to thank them.
Thank you. Any other discussion or comments? All in favor of approving item number four, please?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Actually, it's item number four.
Four, I'm sorry.
Consider authorizing the city manager to execute a contract with Jefferson County related to potable drinking water services and sanitary sewer services to the Jefferson County Correctional Facility. The proposed contract outlines the requirements of the city and the county related to the provision of potable drinking water and sewer services. Jefferson County would be charged the same rates for water and sewer services as established from time to time by the city council for inside the city of Beaumont rates that are established in the Code of Ordinances. The administration recommends approval.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number four. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
And may I have a second? I have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All in favor of approving item number four, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. May I have the reading of item number five, please?
Mayor and Council, the next item is to consider authorizing the city manager or his or her designee to negotiate an engineering services agreement with Lanier and Associates to firm up their estimated cost related to possibly birthing the Battleship Texas in the Natures River adjacent to Riverfront Park. Lanier and Associates, for the public, is an engineering firm based in New Orleans. They have offices here in Beaumont. Lanier engineered the Riverfront Park Bank Stabilization Project that is currently waiting for approval from the Corps of Engineers. And Lanier was asked by the city of Beaumont to provide preliminary numbers for the possible birthing of the Battleship Texas at Riverfront Park. And councilmembers Neal and Samuel have requested an action item tonight to determine whether Lanier and Associates should do additional work to firm up or harden the numbers that they initially provided in that report. That initial report is attached for the council. If the city council approves the resolution authorizing additional work, the council will need to determine these specific items they want included in the contract, and city staff would move forward to negotiate the price for additional engineering services. And that potential proposed agreement and cost would then be brought back to the city council for your consideration. And be happy to answer any other questions you may have. And when I talk about specific items that you might want to include, of course, that's the location of the ship, potentially parking lot, gift shop, ticket sales office, restrooms. And then if you wanted to move forward on this item, we would pay for it with cash out of our fund balance in the general fund.
Thank you. You've heard the reading of item number five. May I have a motion, please?
Move to approve.
May I have a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Councilmember Turner.
The visual we see right here, is this the placement that we're projecting that the ship would be if we did decide to move forward with it?
Bart, you want to answer that?
When we asked Lanier to give us a rough estimate, this is where they place the ship. It starts basically on the outer boundaries of Riverfront Park, and then the, on the leftmost side, it's pretty much at the outfall or just past the Mulberry Sewer Lift Station there on the riverfront. So I'm not entirely sure how much further we could move it down. I know that was some discussion. But that's part of what we need to know is whether y'all are okay with where it's pictured here or if we need to adjust it one way or another within the city-owned properties. Because wherever we put the ship is going to have a bearing on their cost estimate.
Well, me personally, I was under the impression that we were going to possibly put it as close as we could to the intersection. And even with it being placed right here, and it's either future development, I still can see that being an issue if things are developed and the ship is kind of blocking the view of the water.
So when you say intersection, intersection of...
What I'm saying, the interstate, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the interstate.
Well, if we get beyond the area that's pictured in this aerial, that's beyond the city of Beaumont property.
This is, this goes to about the end of our property, so...
The old CBNI that's on that island, I believe the port owns that now.
Councilmember Getz and then Councilmember Doria.
So what I was looking also to see if we could move it closer to where the Breaks Bayou outlet is, moving it a couple hundred feet perhaps further. Let me see, that would be north. That would be still within the property boundaries that the city owns, but basically right to the edge of the outfall, if that could be done.
We can. I can look at moving it down. One thing is that we'll take it out entirely from, you know, in front of any of the property the city owns. They'll put it in front of the Edison Plaza, basically, in its entirety, so...
So the property that Edison... Exactly. I was thinking parallel to the Edison Plaza parking garage. But when you get to the river, who owns that? Is that Edison Plaza?
We own out to the middle of the river.
Okay. All right.
But our property stops down there, back behind Edison Plaza. It's just, we need to determine where, and then you need to be aware...
And we have to stay out of the easement for the railroad as well.
Right. And Councilman Samuel will be the only one that knows this. Back in the, I think it was the 90s when it was cleaned up, but there's a superfund site just north.
Past the outfall?
Exactly. And that's going to come into play the further you move this ship north with the general land office, with the Corps of Engineers. So I'm not saying you can't do it. It's just going to muddy the water.
Where you want to put the ship at? I guess the northernmost point of the property that the city owned. Will it be visible from the interstate? Because that's the whole thing. They want it to be visible from the interstate.
If mine, if you're heading west, you're not going to see it if you're heading east, probably.
How certain are we as to the way this photograph is scaled? I'm not certain that that is a true depiction of the amount of space that that ship... If they say it's two football fields...
The scaling is accurate.
On this?
Yes, sir. They measured the, I think it's 573 feet long, and so this depiction is to scale.
Okay. That's 570 long and how high?
In the middle, it's probably seven, depends because it has a spire, but it could be seven to 10 stories high.
The highest point of the ship is 131 feet, seven and a half inches to the top of the radar.
So it depends on, you know, of course, how high your ceilings are, but it could be easily seven to 10 stories equivalent.
It's 573 feet long, and it's approximately 25 feet from the water line to where the main deck starts. And then for kind of picturing it, the BNSF rail line downtown is about 15 feet above the river line, the water level in the river. So the ship's main deck will be 10 feet higher than that rail for 573 feet long.
I'm just going to give my opinion. We've worked very hard on the riverfront, that area, to develop not only recreational but also commercial, to give attraction to that area and to the downtown area. This is just my opinion. I'm not sure how many times a person would want to visit Battleship. I visited the Battleship at its present location once when I was a little boy. There may be people different from me. But that's not what would bring me to downtown to see a Battleship. And looking out from a park, we won't be able to see the river. We're going to see a ship. And that's not something I think is going to interest... I know it wouldn't interest me. I don't know how others would feel. But a, an opportunity for people to pull their boats from the river, pull up to a wharf or deck right there on the river to go to a restaurant, I can see that happening. When I was a boat owner, we used to come up, even for the fireworks, coming to pull up to the park to watch the fireworks. But that won't be an opportunity if that ship is there. And we will have to deal with the Corps of Engineers. And in my opinion, that totally takes away from what we've been trying to work on for the riverfront for years. We waited dealing with the trains. But now we are getting closer to being able to develop that area. And in my opinion, the ship is not, that would be detrimental to the growth and development of the river as it stands.
Well, I believe everyone has the same feeling up here because this is not what we had in mind. We definitely don't want the ship to block the riverfront. We want the ship to be seen from the interstate coming east and west. And the way it's positioned right now, it's not going to give us the look that we thought we were looking at, in my opinion.
This is the same, this is the same picture as we had last time. He just put this in there for information only.
Well, but I guess now when it comes down to scale and actually knowing the position of where the ship is going to sit, how it will affect the riverfront, it's going to, it's going to block the entire riverfront.
None of it's moved down.
But that, we don't own the property. That's the problem.
We do own the property, Mayor. If you move it down, like you can see...
Or if the ship could be repositioned, turned a different direction.
We own the property down to where that green area is. If you move the ship down to here, you're looking at it being at a location where it's not blocking Riverfront Park. The part of the park that we've always had is from there back towards City Hall. That's where we've always gathered to watch fireworks historically. That's where we've had the amenities in the park. The part where we're looking at moving it down to is not a part of the park that was traditionally utilized. It's pretty close, frankly, to where the CBNI island is. But the line of sight would still allow it to be seen from the Natures River Bridge. And as far as tourism, I think it's important to note that the Battleship Texas would not depend on locals to make up their tourist numbers. They would depend on the people driving through Beaumont on Interstate 10. This would be no different than the USS Alabama, which is located outside of Mobile but visible from Interstate 10, where they draw 300,000 people a year. There's no reason to think that we wouldn't be able to draw similar types of numbers when you consider that there's over 200,000 people a day, a day, that go across that Purple Heart Memorial Bridge. So I understand, I wouldn't want to look at the side of a ship if I was out there enjoying Riverfront Park either. That's why I support moving it further north, closer towards the outfall, and that's what I would like to see happen.
Councilmember Turner, then Councilmember Felschah, then Councilmember Samuel.
So Kyle, even though it's considered to be an action item today, I think it's kind of like, me personally, if we're going to vote with it positioned right there, that's something I know I wouldn't be able to support. We're talking about moving it down. Is that something we can possibly do? Because... Because it's kinda tough to make a decision today based on a placement if it's potential to move it.
Yeah, the administration did not put this on the agenda, so if you want us to reach out, we'll find out where our property line ends, and then come back and show you another picture.
And actually Kyle, I brought it up on JCAD, and that, that ship is pretty much, its point is at the end of the property listed on JCAD for us, the next property down is listed as JPE Limited.
So, if you look at this, okay, see that riprap with the middle of the ship, see that black line in the middle of the ship? Y'all are familiar with that riprap or that white rock that's down there? At the end of that, you can see the sidewalk where there's a little circle, that's where Riverfront Park basically ends right now. However, we need to confirm what Mr. Barkowia just said, because we had to get approval from whoever that owner was, that outfall, the Calder Outfall, all the water, as part of the Calder Drainage Project comes out.
That's, that's right.
So, you're saying we don't own that blue?
Correct, we're right there, and there's that gap.
Show the council that, so if that's true.
That's the end of our property line, where the blue is. And that's where that outfall is.
I thought the outfall was further.
So, didn't we say the same river right here?
Oh, it's right here. It's at the end of this.
I thought it was over here.
It's at the end that it is built, and pretty much.
This, this is a different, JPE, I don't know who JPE.
So, it's right here for it, yeah, it's pretty much right at the end of.
That's the end of our line.
But you know that for sure?
Yes, it's on JCAD.
Because I was thinking, is, is that not the Calder Outfall right there?
It is.
That's owned by the Edison.
Okay, but this is the Calder Outfall right here, but we don't own all that property. And you're telling me that that's the limit right there? Wait, 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 which is pretty much the corner of the Edison Building. Okay, well, that's a problem. Yeah, I, I agree.
I think we need to table.
More information. May I make a motion to table this item until the city staff can get back to us with more in-depth information?
Second.
Well, I, I, I have a question, if, if you don't mind. I, so we, there's no more discussion about funding or utilizing any funds at this point for any exploration or any other questions, we're just gonna table this and come back as it is.
I agree to that.
Yes, that's, that would be my motion to table it to come back to this action item.
Well, because right now we can't get a, a, a true, we won't get a true estimate, correct?
Well, we know where the property line is, but if, if we wanted to continue to make discussions, that's fine. Uh, I, it's not gonna change, the line, where, our property line is not gonna change.
Well, that's true.
But if, if y'all wanna go forward and table it, that's fine.
Well.
Your motion is on the floor.
It's, it's Councilmember, uh, Felschah's motion, and I second it, but as far as, uh, where the ship is going to be, we can reach out to JPE and, and see if they would have objection there. I think the ship should be moved a little bit further north, I understand your concerns about where it is, and, uh, yeah, you know, I don't know who owns the river or, or, but, you, you know, as far as where that land is, you'd have to go across that to get into, onto the ship, so, uh, I think it ought to be tabled so we can explore that.
Well, may I ask one additional question to be, come back with the table and, and we can move forward?
Sure.
May I? Uh, Mr. Manager, as I understand, if there's anything that we do close to that outfall, that has something to do with some previous, uh, problems in that channel, is that correct?
You're correct, there's, there's issues with the outfall itself, or there will be, and there's issues with that superfund site.
The superfund.
As it ties into the bio, which is right there.
So, I would like, when we bring this back, I would like to have information about the superfund site and about, uh, having it, how the Corps of Engineers would feel about intrusion upon that outfall.
We'll try, just, just know that these are federal agencies that we've been waiting for over a year, I think, on just to sign off on the bank stabilization project, so to get clear answers on this, we're not gonna be able to get that anytime soon.
Okay, and my, the last thing I, I will say, with this, anything we do that changes what we've already applied for with the Corps of Engineers, would that not impact our development with the riverfront?
Absolutely, I'm, I'm so glad you, you brought that up, and I know you're aware of it because of your experience on this council. Staff, we, we've done this for ever, since this discussion of the Battleship first started, but it wasn't, I mean, we tried to tell some of you, and then we were careful with others, so there, there's a lot of issues that come into play, so you have a engineered project before the Corps of Engineers right now, that's been there for, what, over a year maybe?
Longer than that.
Almost two.
So, to your point, Mayor Protem, Samuel, anything you try to do down here that ties in along the riverfront, has to, would go back to the Corps of Engineers, and you'd have to basically re-engineer that portion, and then wait for their approval on that.
So, they, they would separate that out from what we've already applied for?
You can't, because it's a, there's a lot of work and digging that's gonna go in this whole area back here, behind, behind these, behind City Hall, behind the Civic Center, and stabilizing the bank, stabilizing it where it is today. So, anything that changes that or could potentially change it, goes back to them.
Okay, and Mayor, please let me, uh, just, for Council, Councilman Samuel, please know that the, where the ship sits now, I can't support that, I don't think any of us do. But for me to make a snap decision tonight and kill this entire project, I was just asking for more time to get more information such as you just gave, I wanna make an intelligent decision. And I don't, I, where the ship is now, I understand the council doesn't support that, but my desire was to look into it and to see if it's possible to move it down further north, and if so, great. If not, then I understand the council can't support that. So, for me, the tabling of it was just to give us time to get more information.
This is, uh, city attorney?
And also consideration needs to be given crossing the BNSF Railroad. This proposal indicates a pedestrian bridge over the railroad track, and if you move it further north, then that would be over property that the city doesn't own.
So. Councilmember Felschah, uh, Councilmember Turner, and I'll come back to you, Councilmember Felschah.
I know we said potentially over a year, if, if possible, I would like to know, if, I know not tonight, but can you email and let me know exactly how long it's been?
Since, since Riverfront Project, Riverfront Park Project has been worked on?
No, when, when-
Yeah, you understand what I'm saying, yeah.
The engineering firm submitted it to the Corps.
It's gone to the Corps twice, so I'll have to go back and find out when the initial submission was, but I know that we've been working on this with Lanier and the Corps for at least the last two years, cause I started two years ago in January.
Yeah, exact, yeah, exact, yes, I can, cause I know, I've been hearing y'all saying any, any time now, we're waiting on a answer, and and we've been waiting two years, and now we're saying if you go back and do it again, you're looking at a potential another two years, that's what it's sounding like to me.
Well, it, it just depends, because we initially submitted to the Corps, and we got to pretty much the end of the process, and the debris in the river got brought up. So, when the debris in the river got brought up, the Corps said, we're okay with you leaving it there at this point, we finally got to there, but we want you to denote the exact positions of the debris that's in the river, and then resubmit the application. And then when we did, that reset the clock, and then that's been going on, you know, probably for at least nine plus months now. So, you know, just because they say the process is six to twelve months for, for the permit, it, it just depends on how that back and forth goes with that river debris in there, it basically reset the clock almost for that whole permit review process on us.
So.
So, it's like we've been through it twice.
And this would be resetting it again.
If you substantially change it, I would not recommend doing that, I would go, I would push the Riverfront Park Bank Stabilization through as is, and if you do anything with Battleship Texas, I would make it as a separate project, assuming Riverfront Park Bank Stabilization has been completed, and that you're doing that project after it, so that you don't impact the Riverfront Bank Stabilization as it exists, and reset that all over again.
Thank you.
So, we're back to a timing issue, that you want the Riverfront Project completed, and then we'll apply it to the Corps of Engineers for this second project, and that could be sometime in twenty twenty-two.
For long?
Or twenty-three, twenty-four?
It depends on when the Corps signs off on it, then you go out for bids.
I'm, I'm, I'm listening, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm, I'm listening.
Depends on when the Corps approves it. Then you go out for bids, and by the time they commence construction, you're talking twelve to fifteen months?
Fifteen months is what we anticipate from the bid release to the end, but you could submit, once the Corps approves the Riverfront Bank Stabilization Project, you could submit a subsequent project that would occur after it.
But they're not gonna approve it unless they know.
Yeah, it, it won't be approved for twelve months, I'm just saying you could run them s- kinda sorta in parallel, um.
Co- co- my position's always been that this project would complement the Riverfront Project and not compete with it. I'm not interested in, in creating a competition here. It's, for me, it's, it's, it's a compliment, that's why I said it was important to me that we be able to move it to where it doesn't compete with the Riverfront Project, that we understand that we as a city are not responsible for the maintenance and operation on an annual basis, and then hopefully the state of Texas would give us some help with the initial investment of birthing the ship, which we don't know. But my point is, I'm not interested in trying to create a problem, I had all of my concerns answered by Bruce Bramlett, and that's why I was even willing to move forward. But you're telling me that if we pitch this to them now that you're concerned that's gonna cause a problem with the riverfront?
Absolutely.
Well, it, it does, no matter where you put the ship, we can't move it down far enough on this property where it won't overlap the Riverfront Bank Stabilization, it's going-
So, we have to wait till after that's approved, and then apply for it, is what you would recommend.
That's what we would recommend. If you tried to amend it now, you're, you're gonna start the process over again, and you haven't even really engineered this project, we just have a, just have a ballpark estimate.
You can't submit the ba- Battleship piece to the Corps anyway, until you have a hundred percent engineered plans. And in the initial estimate that Lanier had given us, they said it would be six to nine months to engineer, fully engineer the project. So, you know, if y'all would okay it, and we submitted RFP, and we got it, you're gonna have a six to nine month engineering effort, then you're gonna have to submit it to the Corps for approval at that point, and then once the Corps approves, you can put it out for bid and construct it. And that's why the timeline for when they wanna finish the dry dock of that ship, and then go bring it back and dock it somewhere, there's no way we're done by, uh, summer of twenty-three if, if they have the ship ready to move, there's no possible way to have the dock available by then.
Councilmember, uh, Samuel?
So, my question is, if we can't move the ship further up the river, if we can't do that, why are we considering spending money to get engineering done when that's not what we're talking about doing?
Well, my motion was to give us time to, to confirm that we can't move it, and, so I understand your point, I do. But my motion was to table it, to give us time to make an informed decision. Not sure, not sure if this, if the, who owns that property, you said?
Joe Penland.
Hoping maybe that they would be willing to work with the city, but we don't know that until we ask the question. But, but I understand, I don't, I'm not interested, as I said, creating a competition with this other project. It, it's gotten complicated, I agree.
Councilmember Getz?
So, understanding what Councilmember Felschah is saying is, yes, let's table this to talk to Mr. Penland and see if he would be amenable to allowing us to, uh, birth the ship outside of some property there that he does not appear to be interested in developing. And, you know, we're not committing to any funding tonight, we're just asking for time to do our due diligence on where the ship can potentially be located.
Mayor?
Councilmember Doria?
Uh, Mr. Barkowia, he just explained to us that wherever we want to birth that ship would not be ready by the time it got out of dry dock, so we won't be able to meet the timeline with the, uh, the Battleship Texas folks, and, I mean, so it's kind of a, a dead issue. We won't have a place ready for them when they're ready to move it, we wouldn't, wouldn't, we wouldn't be able to do it.
And like Councilmember, uh, Samuel said, it doesn't change the fact that we don't have the land to move it. I mean, the ownership of the land doesn't move. Councilmember Getz?
So, with regard to that, we don't know how long it's going to take. The Battleship Texas Foundation doesn't know how long it's gonna take to do the repairs. They're estimating that it's going to leave to go to Galveston in the second quarter of twenty-two, and that it's gonna take a year for it to be, before it's refurbished, it could take longer, it's probably not gonna take shorter. If the Battleship Texas was ready to be moved before we have everything finished here, is it possible that it could be docked at the port like any other ship until such time? I mean, you know, I guess that's a question we'd have to ask the port, but, uh, you know, it's a ship like any other ship, uh, other, it's got some pretty big guns on it, uh, so, uh, you know, I would, I would think we could come around that problem without any, without any issue.
Okay, so Councilmember Felschah, do you care to withdraw your motion?
No, I'd like to motion to stand, just call for the vote.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor, and we've had discussion, all in favor. Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? The motion carries. May I have the reading?
Can I, do you wanna, do you want staff to do anything in the meantime?
Councilmember Neal, Councilmember Samuel?
So, the original intentions behind this thing, from my standpoint, and I apologize, I didn't realize the city didn't own farther north than what is shown on this map. But my original intentions behind this thing were that, uh, we could get some firmed up numbers on what it would actually cost the city to do this project. And I've heard Councilmember Getz and Councilmember Felschah saying numerous times that there's the possibility that they could go out and get state funding to help this project, because I personally don't support the taxpayers of Beaumont having to fund this entire project, uh, by themselves. This boat's owned by the state, and I think the state needs to be part of it.
Absolutely.
I'm even more in a difficult position knowing that this is as far as we own. Uh, we can't block the outfall, even if Mr. Penland gives us permission to, just because that would create other issues upstream. We're almost at a point now where we need to throw all this stuff away and start completely over, if this is the path the city wants to go.
Councilmember Samuel?
Well, I, I agreed to bring this to council, because it was my desire to either do something or let it go so that we can continue with our work. Um, I didn't vote in favor, I didn't vote against it, I'm trying to be a team player. We can't move the ship any further away, that's not gonna change regardless. Even if we were to bring it, move it, uh, another fifty yards down the way, it's still gonna obstruct the view of the river. So, uh, I'm definitely not in favor of expending, uh, funds to do anything to something that we're not in agreement to do. So, that's my position, and at this point, unless we could have cha- moved it further down the river across the, um,
Fallout.
Fa- outfall, I think that kills the whole, uh, vision of that, that area. Cause if we're talking about getting the owners of, um, it's gonna obstruct the view of the office building, uh, at Edison Plaza, fourteen stories high. Maybe, maybe that's a part of their plan, and maybe they would agree with it, but I don't see it. Maybe, maybe that's a part of their plan and maybe they would agree with it, but I don't see it. I wouldn't want to look out my window and miss the river because of the ship.
Any other comment?
So are we firming up the estimate with Lanier?
No.
Good, okay.
No, but I, I just need to, we just need to, if you want staff to do something else, we just wanna know what it is and we'll do it. I'm not, I'm not.
I think it's the council's responsibility, I'm assuming, to, to investigate this property, see if there's any interest there at all.
It would be with the owner, but if you're asking for us to bring back additional information to you, just please let us know, we will.
If, if the information tonight is firm, that trying to go to the Corps of Engineers at this point would be unwise, that we don't own that property, that it could jeopardize if we move it towards the Calder, uh, fallout or outfall, it is, all of that is a problem, and all that's firm information, that's solid information.
It would be a problem.
But Lanier cannot give a firm or a better estimate until they know exactly where we wanna put this boat.
Right.
I mean, there's, you could have 50 percent, 50 percent swings in this cost estimate just based off of where it goes.
Yeah, but I'm saying that I, I don't think we need to go to Lanier at this point.
I agree.
Because we've got, we first got established if we can even move it.
You gotta know where it's going.
Yes, and I don't think the council right now supports where it sits, it has to move further north. And it sounds like we probably.
And moving it further north. We can't move it because we don't own the property.
So to answer your question on my part, I'm not asking the staff to do anything, I think we have to just look and see if that property is available. If it is, great, if it's not, then I think the project probably dies on its own.
Okay, thank you. The city manager, we're gonna move to public hearing, item number six.
Yes ma'am, uh, item number six is a public hearing, I'll read the ordinance. We have an ordinance entitled an ordinance finding the structure located at 3720 Ector Street to be a public nuisance and ordering its demolition and removal as a clear and present danger to public safety, providing for separability, providing for repeal, providing a penalty, and providing an effective date. And, uh, may it be appropriate to open the public hearing at this time?
We're gonna now open the public hearing.
Unless staff has any comments they'd like to make.
No, the only, the only comment I had is we, we did try to, uh, get a demolition consent from the owner, but we're unable to, so that's why we're having to bring it to council.
So Doria.
Question?
Councilmember Getz.
Were you able to get a hold of the owner and he refused, or were you just unable to get a hold of the owner?
We tagged this property back in March, and we, we were contacted by the owner's brother, and the owner's brother took the form but never came back, and so we've, we've, we've attempted several times, but have just never been able to get it.
So not a, no outright refusal, but no success?
Correct.
Any other discussion?
The way, uh, excuse me, mayor, the way it looks now, is that, on this picture, is that how it looks now? I mean, it looks like it's already been demolished, it just needs to be hauled off.
Yes, sir, it was fire damaged, so it really just needs to be cleaned up, we just need council's authority to do that.
Mayor, can we ask if the owner or the owner's representative is here to address the council?
Is anyone affiliated with 3720 Ector Street in the audience?
Let the record reflect, no one is here.
Let the record reflect, no one is here. At this time, I will call for a motion, please.
A motion?
I'm gonna close the hearing. And may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve this ordinance.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor of approving item number six, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Okay, we are.
Mayor, the, uh, I believe the representatives from OCI are here, uh, with former mayor Becky Ames, so it's up to y'all if you wanted to go, go up to executive session or.
Okay, in the audience, we've decided to do this for the sake of time, because we have, uh, three other items on executive session, and because they've traveled from out of town, we wanna go ahead and address that. Because the other two items are, uh, they will be very lengthy. And so, we will recess to executive session, hear this executive session, come back, make a vote, and then, uh, we will come back and finish the rest of the agenda of the executive items, so.
Before the agenda of the executive items, will we have a discussion on the process of hiring the city manager when we come back?
We will have the discussion, and because that discussion will not be just a few minutes, that's why we wanna go ahead and take your item number seven. Okay, so at this time, we will recess to executive session, you may wait, and if not, thank you for joining us, thank you.
So we're back from executive session, so what we've decided is to defer the consideration for item number seven. Mr. City Manager, will you please take us into the discussion item? Thank you.
Yes ma'am. Two council members requested that there be a discussion item related to reviewing and discussing the hiring process related to the position of city manager.
Okay, so the discussion item is to proceed with guidelines, I guess we would say are recommendations for hiring a new city manager.
So basically are we gonna, this is the start of the process to get, look for firms to go out and seek candidates, correct?
Yeah.
Councilmember Faelschau.
It's obvious that the city council, other than Councilman Samuel, has never been through this process. And city manager, I'd like to look to you and ask you, what recommendations would you make to us? And give us some guidance on the process and what you would recommend we do over the next 90 days.
So the council needs to make a determination. Number one, are you going to do a national search? And then if you are, then, this is just advice, then I would work with Chris Catalina, who's our Personnel Director, Personnel, Human Resources. And we've already provided you 20-plus national search firms. We could probably narrow it down to three to five firms that have experience hiring city managers in the state of Texas, comparable-sized cities, and probably give you again three to five that you could, if you were, if the council as a whole said, "Look, if there was an agreement, consensus amongst the council, we want to do a national search," then you, my recommendation would be you invite three or more of these search firms to Beaumont where you could interview them. Ask them a lot of questions. What searches are you conducting right now? What cities? What positions have you fielded over the last 12 months? You know, and have a feel, you know, for their experience and level of competency. And then you, you know, make a decision to hire a search firm to conduct the search. That's one way to do it. You're probably going to need to appoint an interim city manager, man or woman, to, you know, do this job on a day-to-day basis until a permanent city manager is hired. So So, that's a decision you're gonna probably need to make. And if you say, "Yes, we need to have an interim City Manager," my advice would be to pick one of the Department Directors that we have that could do this job. And there's a lot of them. I mean, we have a quality group of Department Directors that can do it. They know the city, they know the organization, they know the challenges, issues we're working on, projects we're working on. So, if, again, you're gonna probably need to do that for sure. So, if you're asking for advice, I would interview the ones that are interested in doing it. Sit down with them. You can do that upstairs. You could have that interview and, you know, talk to them about, number one, are you interested? Number two, you know, so you have a feel for one another, you know? Does he or she wanna do the job for the next six-plus months, whatever it takes? And then, so, you got two things before you.
Two things.
An interim appointment, and then how you proceed with a...
On the interim appointments previously, we've... It's been someone that's within the city. We had Chief at one time act as interim, and we've had other...
I did it one time.
Yes. So, that's, that's the first thing, is to find an interim. And secondly, is make a determination of how, how we're gonna spread, how far we're gonna spread out in searching for a City Manager. And that's normally been nationally. We've gotten a firm, we've tried to find out what has been the... What type of experience they have in seeking City Managers, what's been the result of those City Managers that they've placed, and what do... And then, we, we put the other criteria in that we feel is important for our city. And we give timelines to, basically, not necess... It could be RFP, or it could be just getting those firms that are out there to... And we, as a council, narrow it down to a manageable number. And we've been talked with, I think it started around five firms, but is that basically...
Yes.
I don't really remember everything about it.
Yeah, that was back in nineteen ninety-nine, I believe. So, you would...
Different century.
I would say, narrow it down to three, bring them in this room, they'd be right here at the podium, and you'd basically interview them. And then, then you could hopefully make a decision to move forward with one, and...
You say, "Narrow it down to, let's say, five." Are you recommending that the council do that, that we each bring to the table the companies we like?
No.
Because that would cause great confusion.
Yeah.
You're saying, "Let the staff do that."
If you're at... You were asking for advice, so I would let Mr. Catalina bring three or so firms, and if you weren't happy with them, go back and find some more. But three firms that do a lot of work in Texas, that, again, conduct searches, comparable-sized cities, that know what they're doing, and maybe invite those three firms in, and then you could interview them.
Could... What are the interim position... Could we have some type of RFQ processed where we open that up for, for other people as well?
What other people are you talking about?
I'm just, I'm just thinking, you might, you might have people outside the city that are, that are well-qualified for a position as a interim.
Sure, you could do that.
And you could post that, just like you would any other job?
You could.
Mayor.
So, so I kind of anticipated that this might be the direction that we go, and I took the liberty of developing a draft. This is by no means anything other than just a guideline, but this, what I would have handed out is an application for an interim City Manager. And I just got it off of TML's website and kind of doctored it up and making it uniquely Beaumont's. But I, I agree with what the suggestions are here. You know, send out a request for proposal, give a deadline for applicants for an interim City Position, City Manager Position. And then, you know, the, whoever is selected to be the interim City Manager can be tasked with working with Human Resources to bring in a search firm to do a national search, because I think it, it behooves us all to go after the best candidate that we can find. We don't want to limit it to just Texas, but, you know, putting it out there for a national search is the best way to cast a wide net. So, you know, if, you know, I, I think this is something that we can use as a template to, you know, put out there for a request for proposals. I would just suggest that we make it, you know, not an open-ended process, but maybe set a deadline to respond to the requests for proposals so that we can just get off a dead center and, and move the process along.
Councilmember Doria.
Well, what does a search committee use the costs, or you search companies, for a process like this?
Yeah, it depends. It depends on the, usually, the size of the city, the position, but for City Managers, city this size, I don't know. We could double-check. We just haven't done this in so long, it's hard to...
Yeah. You weren't part of the committee last time.
No.
The numbers I've seen have been upwards of fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Would, would this be a process that has to use a search committee? Could we not just put this out for applications, have people apply, send in their resume, have a committee look at it?
We need to go out for a search firm.
No, we need to go out for a search firm. We, we need to use and utilize a national search firm that does this on a regular basis. I think this, this is something this entire council has never done. Again, Councilmember Samuel is the only person that has gone through this process. And like you just stated, of course, our City Manager was not part of the process when he got the job, which was nineteen years ago. And it's, it's something too serious for us to even consider just taking applications. I think we need to utilize a firm that does this on a regular basis. It is a, a cost, but it's, it's a cost that we have to incur.
Would whoever was the interim, would they be limited for applying for the full-time job?
I don't know if you could legally, if you could legally do that.
You know, we've seen here locally a couple of times where the governing body has had to, including us, we've had to fill a vacancy, and it was expressed that we'd really like for you to not consider running for that position if you're gonna be appointed to fill out a, a term or for an interim basis. And then, a couple of times, after having that assurance, they changed their mind and said, "You know, I kinda like this, I'm gonna run." So, legally, I don't think there was anything we could do to stop them from that, but, you know, if they've gone back on a promise, then, you know, kind of...
But you may also find out that that interim person is a good, qualified person, and you might want to hire him.
That's, that's a good point. It's a good point, fair point.
And by using a national firm, that wouldn't preclude us from allowing someone within the organization to apply?
Right, it might be we do a national search and find out the person that's best qualified is right here in our backyard. So, you know...
Which I think would be a perfect situation.
But we, we will have cast that net out there. One of the things that I have been told, and I guess this is, goes back to the city charter, is that we may have some difficulty in obtaining a good, strong pool of candidates because we don't offer contracts. The City Manager is an at-will employe. The City Manager can terminate their relationship with the city upon thirty days' notice and vice versa. And I'm told that a lot of cities now offer contracts to their City Managers. Is that true, Mr. Hayes?
That's true. And I don't have to get thirty days' notice, so there is no, there are no provisions related to notice.
Oh, okay.
But most, most City Managers in Texas have a contract.
But if most cities are doing that, I mean, that's something we can look at. I mean...
I don't know if we can under the charter or not.
Well, according to our charter. But if, if other cities are doing it across the state of Texas, then...
Their charter might be different.
Their charter may be different, that's true.
But one thing we do need to do, we need to move forward with making progress toward what we're going to do and how we're gonna do.
So, is there consensus to move forward with a RFP for the interim and the search firm?
You don't, you don't do an RFP.
Or, uh, open for the applications?
So, we're tasking the staff, though, to, to begin pursuing these companies and bring back to us five, correct?
We're talking about two different things, so...
Yeah.
Under that scenario, yes.
We're tasking the staff to handle that, and then the council needs to handle the consideration for interim City Manager. So, we've got two tasks here, one on the staff, one on the council.
But, but for the one that's on the council, it's not called an RFP, what is it called? How do you advertise that you're seeking an interim City Manager?
So...
Does it go on the website?
Basically, under this scenario, meaning, if you hire a national search firm, you're going to purse, post the position, again, nationwide. But it sounds like some of you are interested in posting the interim position. You're doing, you're doing a posting that's open to everyone and anyone for the interim, and then you're doing the same thing to a national search firm for the position. I've never really heard of that, but you can do it.
Let's talk... I, I think we need to talk about what we really want to look for in an interim. Whoever we get as an interim, they're, they're looking at that as being, filling the position until a City Manager is hired, unless they want to apply. That person is normally someone that's already within the system, because to get someone to come outside, what kind of quality of a City Manager will we get if they know they're coming in for a short period of time? And don't know the system that exists, don't know any of the plans, don't know the, the people. So, it, it... That's why I believe we've chosen intrims from within, those within who've shown their dedication to the city and shown that they have the ability to be the leader if necessary. And I, I, I don't know why we would go out looking for someone to come in just for a short period of time. Some may say, "Okay, they need someone with a different mindset, a different set of ideas." That person's not gonna be there long enough to implement any type of new idea.
You're looking for a maintainer, you're not looking for someone.
Right, right. So, we're looking for someone that understands where we are, understand how we stand as a budget, the philosophy of, of management, and just to hold down the fort and keep things going in the interim.
Well, but I beg to differ, because I believe if, if we have an interim that comes in with a, a new set of eyes, a different vision, not the, the, the same old day-to-day, if it's something... If they come in, they know that they're gonna be here for a limited time. If they're here for a limited time, then they know that going in. So, they know that their job is to come in to help a search firm take our ideas, look at our budget, move us in the direction in which the city wants to move into. Because if you've, if you've been in interim before, nine times out of ten, you've done this job before, and, or either you've been a City Manager before, or you've, you've dealt with a light budget or a budget bigger than what Beaumont has and, and has done this type of work. So, accepting a job as an interim, you know going in. The problem I have is because if we take someone from their job here, who's gonna take their place? If we move someone from their position? And then you have to fill that job, and then you're steady backfilling jobs because you're moving people out of their positions that would be qualified to be a City Manager.
That's a good point.
So, if you don't have anyone, because we don't have an assistant City Manager, we don't have an assistant, um, person to bart, Chris, Todd, so you move them out of their respective positions, then you're gonna move someone up, and then every one, every other position is gonna be backfilled because you're moving people out of their jobs that they do every day. These people do their jobs of what they do every day, and we don't know who will apply for the job.
I understand that.
And looking at it, someone coming in different, and looking at it with a fresh set of eyes from a new perspective, is not looking at it from the way that everyone sitting here or that work here sees it.
But that's like asking a, a new person to come in that have no idea of what's going on in the city, and they're gonna have to take their information from what someone else tells them or what they see.
They're not gonna take it... No, they're not gonna do it from what someone tell them, they're gonna, they're gonna do it from the information that's documented.
That's before them.
That's before them.
And we're talking about, what, six months, eight-month period?
Hopefully, less, yeah.
And it's, it's...
But I believe if you've done the job before, and you, you're qualified, and you've done it from a different, larger city, or not even so much a larger city, it could've been a smaller city, that is in the same position that we're in, that has helped a firm hire a City Manager or a City Attorney to move a city in a different direction.
Mayor? Ultimately, it will be our decision to hire the best interim City Manager that we can, but, and, and we don't know that anybody that's currently here is even interested in that position. The way we determine this is we open it up for a limited amount of time, give current staff the opportunity to apply, also, anybody that's not on current staff the opportunity to apply. And then, we, as a council, will interview who we think the best candidates are, and then we collectively will make that decision. So, you know, all I'm saying is that what is the best way to advertise the fact that we are actively looking for an interim City Manager? I've seen, I've seen the positions advertised on the TML website, that's where I got a lot of this information. There's an International City Manager Association, I think they also offer this on their website. There's, you know, I, I guess we'd want to put it on the city.
Councilmember Gitts, I promise you, people know we are looking for a new City Manager.
But, but, but we have, but we have to do the formal...
Yeah, formally, right.
Formal way of doing it. And then, they have to respond to a certain person, whether it be Chris, or Haley, or you, or there, somebody, they've got to respond to somebody.
They need to respond... Well, first of all, at this point, we need to decide tonight that we are effectively starting the search. Agreed?
Agreed.
That's agreed.
That's for the interim, correct? No, no.
No, no, that's for a City Manager.
For a City Manager?
That's for a City Manager.
How often, uh, the, uh, I, I'd be interested in knowing, how many people, how often do we, do people go out for interim, uh, City Managers? Because who would... Huh? I, I'm just...
I, I don't know if I've ever seen that, but I'm sure it happens. So, if there's agreement amongst the seven of you, we would post the position through personnel, and we do this all the time, so you post the position and put it out there at as many places as you can, trying to seek that person. You asked me from the start, advice, you know? I don't know if you'd be able to go through this process and hire an interim City Manager before I leave. I plan to leave probably the end of March now, so the likelihood of filling that position, you might be able to do it, but it's gonna be very difficult.
So, let... So let me, let me make a statement and you tell me if if I'm wrong. Because again, I'm looking to your institutional memory. Right now, as a council, our focus needs to be on securing this national firm to do a search. We don't need to spend too much time on also trying to find an interim city manager, hiring two positions. That's a decision that probably needs to be made internally, that you can make recommendations to us.
And I'm not gonna make a recommendation.
And he already said he would not make.
You can't do that, okay?
I'll give you.
Right.
Because I I, again, I'm I'm big on, well, it doesn't matter. But we, as a council, just need to make a decision and select someone to be the interim city manager and not not let that be our main focus. Our main focus needs to be on hiring a permanent city manager. You're you're, you seem caught, you seem concerned about us getting too wrapped up and going out there looking for this interim person. Is that correct?
I don't think you're gonna be able to do it in the next.
So that's a, that's a decision we need to make internally, do this as a council, approach someone.
That's what I would do if you're trying to have an interim in place.
So look at some people that are qualified, interview them, talk to them, install that person, and then put our focus on the national search for the city manager. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And the way to do that, though, Councilman Felschaw, I believe, is to advertise for the interim. I mean, otherwise, you're being presumptuous that Chris Boone might wanna do it, or Bart might wanna do it, or Tom, you know, so.
And I have no problem with advertising.
And I have no problem with advertising.
We just can't take three months to do this.
No, and I'm not saying we should.
Do it tomorrow. I mean, I think it needs to be posted tomorrow. We already know we have to fill the job. It it's not a question of filling the job, it has to be done.
And that's why I did this.
Councilmember Turner.
I'm not here to throw, throw shade, I'm here to throw, to tell you how it works. You're not gonna be able to post it tomorrow. Unless you decided tonight.
Tomorrow, I'm sorry.
You're gonna have to decide what's the range for compensation. I mean, there's a lot to it, so we can do it within a couple days once we know clearly what you're looking for. So if you're going to post the interim position, then you're gonna have to, you know, I haven't looked at that, I just got this tonight, but you're gonna have to spell it all out and agree on what's in there and compensation. Meaning, what what people normally do is they, you don't post a position, you just say, look, we're gonna interview all the department directors that are interested in this interim position. Then you don't post it at all, you just interview them and make a selection. You've completed that, and then you go focus on the permanent position. But if you wanna post an interim position, I'm just saying you can, but it's not a quick process.
Councilmember Turner.
My my concern is, okay, in the past, like when you went through it, did they interview you and several other people, or was it just you only?
Just me.
So my concern is when you take department heads and you interview them, and we make a decision based upon who we interviewed, you know, how do the guys, how does it look and how do the guys feel if it's not them that's selected and if they're not even interested? So I kinda more confident in seeing who's interested versus just grabbing them, you know, picking one by one. I'd rather see who's interested as far as staff versus just approaching them. I wanna know if they're interested. I don't wanna wanna feel like we're kinda forcing it on them. I wanna feel like, is this what you want to do?
Ways to do that.
Yeah, that's how I would feel more comfortable that way.
If you wanted to, hey, there's twelve department directors. If you're interested, let the city manager know you're interested, and then we set up the interviews with y'all upstairs, one by, one by one. You'd have an opportunity to to visit with them and get to know their, that's, that's what's normally done.
I, you know, I, normally done implies that it's a pretty frequent process. This hasn't happened in a long, long time.
Normal.
By municipalities across the country.
Okay, okay, so. I would encourage my compatriots here to look at, look at what this work is and see if it's something that you think that would be appropriate to be posted that way. Anybody currently on staff can respond, anybody, anybody else could respond, there might not be anybody else out there that wants to walk into an interim position for a short period of time. As the city manager said, probably not, but, you know, this at least opens up that possibility and that that's the way I'd like to see it done. Speaking for me, I'd like to see it posted, give everybody on staff the opportunity to respond. Give everybody, not on staff, the opportunity to respond, and I think we could do this, you know, by the, you know, cut it off by the end of December, January second, and then maybe make some decisions by the end of January for an interim. And if we can't, we can't, but, you know, but I I don't see any harm in trying.
So who's gonna go through the three thousand resumes that you might get if you post it? Because unless you put some pretty strict criteria on this thing, and the way that we would have to post it, the way you're talking about doing it, you're opening this thing up from from anybody.
Look down at minimum qualifications.
I see that, but I mean, those are, that's.
I mean, I'm suggesting, I'm suggesting that anybody applies for this, have a master's degree from an accredited college in public administration and a minimum of five years as a city manager, deputy city manager, assistant city manager, or department director. And, you know, that is gonna, that's not three thousand people, you know, that's, that's pretty limited.
Well, but taking into account that it's Christmas holidays and within the next two weeks, I I don't, I don't see that possible.
But that still doesn't stop people from applying, even if they don't meet the requirements. You still have to have somebody go through the process of eliminating those people from from the system or from the process.
Wouldn't that be appropriate to let human resources win those out that don't even meet the minimum qualifications?
But that couldn't be done in the timeframe that what you just mentioned. One of the other options that we could do, like the city manager mentioned, open this thing up for interviews with the department heads that are interested in the position. And then if there's other people that council would like to see have the opportunity on this, two or more council people can name anybody on executive session for an interview that we want to, correct?
Correct.
So that's another option, if there's somebody else outside the city that, uh, people may or may not be interested in. But I think for the, I think for the short term, to get us off the high center, I think that we go out for the RFP or whatever process we wanna use for the national search firm. And then here in the next couple of weeks, gives us the opportunity to start the process of, uh, of opening it up for uh, department heads or anybody else that this council, two or more people might have that they wanna talk to.
We have to remember that we're looking, we're, I'm sorry, Mayor, go ahead.
No, that sounds good.
I'm just gonna say, we we have to remember that we're looking for somebody to maintain, keep the train running on time until the new manager gets here. We're not wanting somebody to come in here to shake up the system in three or four months and change everything. They can't do it anyway. We're looking for somebody that's familiar with our city, familiar with the way we operate, keep the train running on time. And I I would caution us for getting too distracted with the interim. Let's focus on the the main thing, which is the city manager. This is a maintainer, we need to get this person. We can advertise it, we can do all those things, but we need to get that done and move on. This is, keep our eye on the ball.
So so for me, my question, uh, yeah, do you mind? My question is, we're speaking of interim, and I kinda like what Taylor said as far as opening up the staff, and if two or more council members feel the need to bring in somebody else, that'll be fine, but I know Kyle has told us the timeline that he plans to leave. I would like, uh, to have some form of a timeline, even if we, even if we exceed it, but let's at least have a goal to where we wanna project that we can have an interim place. I don't want it to just be out there and it can exceed past the time. I wanna have like a timeline that where we have a goal that we actually will have an interim place where he can get the proper training and proper things passed as Kyle kinda X's out.
One of the comments Councilman Gitts made, talking about the end of December first of January, I mean, you could, you could have the city manager reach out to the department heads now and schedule interviews with those guys at the first of the year. That's not unrealistic.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure, I just wanted to put it out there, I just wanna make sure we're on the same page as that, you know, kinda get some concrete timelines before we kinda leave out of here tonight, some concrete direction.
Okay, so concrete direction would be that any city director, any director could contact you as city manager and to just state that they're interested in it. And then that way, we will have a list of people that we can begin the process. And then if anybody else have anyone else that they want to.
Up to two people.
Up to two people. Then those people can also interview. In the meantime, HR is already going through the list to present to us three companies for a national search that we can begin that process of eliminating who we would like to use for the national search for the city manager. Correct?
We'll recommend three firms to you, let you review it, and if you agree with those three firms, then we would start asking them according to y'all's schedule to come in and make presentations to you.
Correct. Okay.
Do we have to, uh, is it common practice for us to pay for national search firms to come here to make a presentation, or do they do that on their dime or what?
They'll do it on their dime, if you hire them, then you pay for everything from that point forward.
Okay, but we also need to, we need a, we we need a deadline for department heads to apply so that we will know who all we're dealing with within the company. And we can have a timeline so that we can begin interviewing.
And then could we have at the conclusion of that timeline, I guess, Mr. Manager, you send us an counsel an email and saying you've heard from A, B, and C as expressing an interest, and that way we would know who we're talking about?
Correct. Councilmember Turner.
Mr. Manager, what would you feel is a fair deadline?
Well, I mean, I could send out an email to twelve department directors tomorrow and say, please let me know by next Monday if you're interested, or whatever date you want, and then I'll tell you who's interested of the twelve, and then according to your schedule, all you'd have to do is tell me when you're ready to start interviewing them upstairs. And depending on how many we, you know, we have that are interested, you you could do it maybe in one day, doesn't have to be on a Tuesday, you could do it another day and interview one, two, three, four, whatever. I mean, I don't know how many, I know there's, hopefully, there're gonna be some interest, I just don't know how many.
Well, and once we have that number, then we can set a timeline of when we'll meet, when we can interview. And depending on how how many are interested.
Well, well, I think a primary question is, when do we wanna have an interim in place? And then we can back, back up and establish the other dates. What what would be an ideal ti- time to make the choice?
February first.
February, I I would say February.
Okay, so with that, then we back away from February first in the process in identifying who we're gonna interview and get those done based on that.
Everyone's okay with February?
Now, let me, I wanna make sure I understood, you, looking at February first to have an interim in place, that means the interviews are gonna be occurring during January.
During Jan-, right.
You're not gonna take the seat till February the first, they would just know that they will eventually.
They began to work with the city manager in a transition.
Transition, correct, before you leave March thirty first.
And just recognize that we're gonna lose, you know, guys, from Monday the twentieth, that's Christmas week.
That's right.
Those, that week and the week after that, it's gonna be hard to do things.
Well, because people probably have.
They'll be traveling, got family coming in, so I would, I would at least be gracious and let's discount those last two weeks of this month. So whatever date y'all set on getting the emails to the city manager and when the interviews start.
So by the end of the week, let's say, let's say Friday or or Monday.
Yeah, so so based upon what Kyle said, December thirteenth would be a good day to at least have a, know who has an interest?
Can I speak to that?
Cause he said, if he put it out tomorrow, it will take roughly a week to see who has interest.
Internally.
Internally.
December thirteenth.
I think you need to provide, allow more time than that. This is a, this is a big decision for somebody that may or may not be interested in this, and
Agreed.
I don't think it would be inappropriate to allow, through the Christmas break, to allow somebody to visit with their family and kids and and talk about the possibilities of this. Uh, this is not something that you wanna rush. Especially you don't want somebody to rush in their decision on this, and so let's, let's slow down to go a little faster on this.
Cause I'm assuming we're not gonna do any interviews till after the first of the year anyway.
I wouldn't think so.
I mean, so if we're not gonna do interviews till after the first of the year.
It's no sense in.
Why, why press them?
That's true.
Give them time, and then after the first of the year, we'll come back and we'll start the interview.
Plan on doing some interviews the last two weeks of January.
From time to take, from the interview until, I mean, once, once we interview and pick a person, then we know they're gonna start on February the first, eh?
Well, but this is, this is, this is nothing new. I mean, everyone here in this city, trust me, people outside of the city knows, I've gotten phone calls, I promise you. So, um, I I know we're gonna lose the last two weeks because of the holidays, and and I don't want, I don't wanna rush into it, I don't want anyone to rush into it. Um, but.
So can it just be, uh, contact the city manager by email, uh, as soon as possible not to exceed December thirty first?
Not to exceed December thirty first.
Whether they're interested or not.
Correct.
Just to contact the city manager's office, however they choose, to express interest in interim as soon as possible, but not to exceed.
One thing I I wanna stress, though, is I know we're saying we wanna have them in place by February first, but my theory is, my thoughts is, I wanna have somebody in place, the more time we have them in place, the more time they got to learn and get everything, then the information they need to know from our city manager's accident. So I wanna be mindful of, you know, how far we push off the date to where we make our decision. You know, I don't wanna push it off too far because that's, that's taking less and less time away from the amount of time Kyle will still be present. So I kinda like mid-January versus February first.
Let's see what we're looking at. Well, let let's see what type of response we get. Cause you gotta remember, if it's someone within the city that's already working here, they're not unfamiliar, especially if they're the director. And then if none, and if none applies, then if no one applied, then we will have to go outside. So.
I couldn't see why anybody on staff wouldn't wanna deal with us nice people on a day.
Exactly, like my point.
And I can tell you this, my experience in working, my experience in working with staff and and transitions and having people on site to train someone, after a while, it it, you start getting in each other's way. I, so I I don't think you're gonna wanna burden our city manager with this for two months. Cause after a while, it can, it can get a little bit of a burdensome. It's not gonna take, we don't, whoever this person is, they're not gonna need to spend two months with the city manager. You're not gonna want him to.
And not only that, city manager probably has some vacation time, he has exhaust, so he will probably get in and show him some.
There's gonna be a few things and then.
Yeah, and he can leave and just.
It just, it becomes after a while, it it's, it can become awkward.
It can.
So I, it's not gonna take as long as we think.
Okay, so Chris, you got your direction, city manager, you have your direction, everyone is satisfied with what we've come up with. No one's saying no, so. I think.
One question. Okay, so, so legit, if none of our department heads apply, then what?
We won't get in that position.
You don't know?
Well, we'll, we'll know within two and a half weeks, we'll cross that bridge when we get to it. Okay?
Are y'all going to do another executive session upstairs?
Yes, we have, uh.
Three more items.
We got two more.
We have two more items for executive session.
Three more.
That's two people plus your man, so that's three people.
Oh, yeah, we have three more executive, uh, session items. So before we recess at this point, um, I'm going to go to public comment, and now's the time, any citizen that would like to speak, if you haven't already done so, fill out the green slip to the back of the room, hand it to the clerk, and the clerk will call your name. The clerk will call your name. You will have three minutes to speak, the green light will come on at the beginning of your three minutes. At the end of your three minutes, the red light will come on, and we just ask that you be respectful of the red light in your three minutes. Thank you.
Ronald Kelly, 2295 Angelina Street, Beaumont, Texas.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Mr. Kelly, before your time starts, I just want to tell you, thank you for your patience, we appreciate you.
Thank you very much. I initially came here tonight to fuss, but as I sat here and watched you guys debate on this issue and that issue, I said, "Wow, we really got some passionate people here, who are really concerned about this city." And so I won't necessarily fuss, but I do have a request, as y'all consider spending money for other issues, that you not forget our streets. Please don't forget our streets. I have been living on Angelina Street since 2009. The city did a study, and said, Angelina is to be repaired 2019. Well, now it's almost 2022, and we have not gotten that street repaired. From 4th Street to Jaguar Drive, it is awful. We've had to dodge holes, they, they repair them, they come right back apart, repair them, come right back apart. And I think we deserve to have a better street. I've talked to some of my neighbors who've been there over 40 years, and they say that their streets have not been repaved since they've been there. And so, Councilman Samuel, I know where I'm at, I'm in your district, but then, just across the street, they were in your district, Mr. Duryo, I hope I'm pronouncing that right, Duryo, yeah. And so, uh, so I appeal to all of you, those that represent us, and those who are at large, and those who are not even, uh, in that district, to help us get our streets repaired. Uh, you know, I know we're talking about ships, and spending money for ships and what have you, and perhaps that may bring some tourist dollars in here, but what are the, what are the tourists gonna, what is that going to help tourists to come in here and find that some of our streets is just awful? And I think, again, we as citizens, we deserve to be able to drive down a street without having paved it. And I've seen some streets that have been paved twice in a two-year span, but Angelina has not been touched in many, 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 many years. And so, as you all make your decisions about other financial issues in this city, do not forget our streets. We deserve good streets. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming, and we appreciate your patience again. Thank you.
That is all I have, Mayor.
Okay, at this time, I will go to Councilmember Comment, and I will start with you, Mr. Neal.
No comment.
No comment, no comment.
Mr. Turner?
Good news, 4th Street is on the, uh, scheduled to get done, and we recently voted on it, and it's coming up very soon, so I just wanted to say that, and thank everybody for your patience that waited tonight.
Councilmember Gitts?
Thank you, Mayor. I just would like to call to everyone's attention that today is the 80th anniversary of a day that will forever live in infamy. I'm referring, of course, to Pearl Harbor, 80 years ago today, United States was brought into World War II, when our Hawaiian naval base was attacked by the Empire of Japan. Uh, the number of survivors of that day are very, very few now, uh, but anytime you see a veteran, I hope you thank them for their service. I do also have a question that I'm trying to get answered, and, uh, when is the city of Beaumont going to begin the redistricting process? Uh, who, who can answer that for me, Mr. Manager?
Can't give you a status on it. It's not a posted item for discussion.
I'm not asking.
You're asking for a status.
I'm, I'm asking when we're going to begin.
You're asking for a status.
Okay, I've, I've asked you in an email, and you won't answer me, so, yeah, I'd like to get an answer to that, because the county has done their redistricting, the state's done their redistricting, and I think the city of Beaumont needs to do their redistricting as well.
Thank you, Councilmember Gitts, Councilmember Duryo?
Um, I just want to say to the staff that planned the Christmas tree lighting and dinner, uh, that was really nice, hadn't had anything like that in a while that I know of, and it was nice, really enjoyed, myself and my wife is also, and, uh, I think everybody out there had a real nice time, it was really nice, and I just want to say thank you, and I really appreciate it. That's it, Mayor.
City manager?
No comment.
City attorney? Well, I would like to say to the staff, thanks for a great evening the other night. We had perfect weather, perfect evening, uh, the food was great, the fireworks was amazing, the tree lighting, uh, everyone enjoyed the band, the band was great, and, um, citizens really came out, and they really appreciated it. So to our entire staff, would just like to say thank you so very much, and, um, we will recess into executive session, and thanks, everyone, for coming out. Mr. Kelly, thank you so much for your comments.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly?